This is a workshop session. Donna, our city clerk, could you please do the call to order? I apologize for making you rush. We just don't have Nicole here yet.
Yeah, she'll be here in a minute. Okay. Um, Councilmember Santos?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Lara?
Here.
Mayor Protem Martinez?
Here.
Mayor Carroll?
Here. Thank you. Do I have any requests or action items prior to opening the public hearing? I would open the public hearing at 5:10 PM. Let's begin with the staff report and then we'll take the public hearing actually at the end of that. So would you change that opening time? Thank you. This is the general plan, preferred alternative, land use map discussion with staff direction on alternatives for moving forward. Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. At the December 19th meeting, we brought back to you, we brought to you a general plan update and talked about the alternatives. From there, we were directed to send out notifications to all of the property owners in the area of change, including the county. So we sent out a notice in the mail and included a link to a survey that we did, a new survey. And I have our representatives here from Ramey &amp; Associates to give a presentation.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Simran Malhotra and I'm a principal with Ramey &amp; Associates. I also have Monica Guerra with Ramey &amp; Associates. And we have a short presentation for you today, first overviewing the preferred land use alternative that if approved today will go forth for further analysis in the general plan and the EIR, and also to present to you the results of the community survey that was conducted over the course of last several weeks. So as you, as we all know, the general plan establishes the long-term vision for a city and its sphere of influence. The state of California requires every city to have a general plan to guide its growth, and it requires every city to update it on a regular basis. The general plan then becomes a guide for local decision-making with regard to land use decisions. It also provides the land use framework and provides goals and policies for city, various city ordinances, plans, and guidelines, including the zoning ordinance. So we started this update about a year ago in, in the spring of 2017 with an analysis of existing conditions. We also conducted extensive visioning over the summer and early fall and developed plan alternatives which, as Rebecca mentioned, we shared with you in, at our meeting with you in December. We met with the community at all stages of the, of the plan so far, of the projects so far, multiple times. We had stakeholder interviews, we had meetings with the task force, had a community workshop, held focus groups, and conducted four different online surveys. We received extensive feedback, especially through the community surveys. And based on the input we received at those surveys, we prepared the three alternatives that were brought to you in December. The guidance we received from you led to the development of a preferred land use alternative, which was then, again, the subject of a new survey which was conducted over the course of last month. And as I said earlier, we'll review the results shortly. And the final plan will then become the basis for further analysis in both the general plan and the EIR. Over the course of the project, we have developed a vision statement for the general plan, and it's based on what we heard from the community, which essentially said that Beaumont is a great place to live, and its natural setting and its small-town character play a big role in that desirability. So based on that feedback, we developed a vision statement which is up here on the screen, and I'll just read it out to you. "Beaumont, where we value our small-town feel, our community heritage, and our natural setting. We are committed to encouraging economically sustainable, balanced growth that respects our long history while meeting infrastructure needs and protecting our environment. Beaumont's community pride and rural mountain setting sets our city apart as a vibrant and healthy community with local access to retail services, jobs, and recreation." So based on this vision statement and the feedback we received from the community, we looked at the area within the city, and it can be broken down into four parts. Areas which are preserved, which you can see here shown in green, which are areas where there are protected or open space resources. Areas shown in light yellow are areas, are the areas of maintenance, which are essentially maintaining existing land uses in stable neighborhoods. So a lot of the residential neighborhoods that are existing today are fall within this category. The next category shown in the, in the orange are the enhanced categories, which is, we are, these are the areas we are trying to revitalize with some moderate change. And finally, the areas in this darker reddish tone are areas which are evolving or transforming with the goal of realizing the city's vision of promoting community character, identity, and economic development. And this could mean either intensification of land uses in some areas, but it could also mean lowering densities in others. And growth would be focused along the 79 corridor and more protection be offered and lower densification happen along the, the areas in the sphere of influence. So based on that info, more detail, here are the various elements of the preferred alternative that was refined for your input. Starting with the mix of jobs, retail, and services along the Highway 79 corridor, we have the creation of a downtown area, downtown mixed-use designation along Sixth Street around where we are today. This extends along Beaumont and all the way along Sixth to, to the edge of the, to the end of the city limits along Sixth. Lowering of density along the, in the sphere from half-acre lots to 40-acre lots to a rural residential low designation, 10-acre lots closer into Petra, and the creation of a traditional neighborhoods with 7,000, average of 7,000-acre lots closer in again to Highway 79. And then more of a mixed use and higher-density residential uses on the east side of Highway 79, which would be closer to the future transit station proposed on Pennsylvania and north of Fourth. So as I mentioned earlier, by lowering densities along, in the sphere area, we are protecting the hillsides and maintaining views to, to the mountains to the south. One other aspect of the preferred alternative is the Jackrabbit area, where we are proposing recreational uses in that area more, which are less intensive than what's proposed there today, which is, again, half-acre, half-acre lots. And now I'll have Monica go, briefly go over the survey, which I believe you all would have received as well and may, possibly may have participated there as well.
Good afternoon, Council. Just one point of clarification. The traditional neighborhoods, it's not 7,000-acre lots, it's 7,000-square-foot lots, just a slight little, no, no, it's okay. I heard some whispers, and so I want to clarify.
Maybe can you introduce yourself, please, say your name?
Absolutely. My name is Monica Guerra. I'm a consultant with Ramey &amp; Associates. So I wanted to review the results of the community survey. The survey was open between January the 12th and January the 28th. We had a total of 736 responses. I want to clarify, even though there were 736 responses, it does not mean that there were 736 people that responded every single question. We do know, based on self-identified information, that there were 27 people that identified living in the county. There was an English and a Spanish version of the survey distributed. Respondents were asked to provide input about five key areas of change, and we'll be reviewing that in a few minutes. The survey was structured in a way where respondents were also given the choice of basically saying whether they wanted to respond to each area or, or not. So yes, no question. And in terms of how we promoted the survey, because we have Facebook, website, the email list, the task force, youth group, and a notice to property owners within the city and the sphere of influence that were impacted by the highest change. In terms of demographics, based on self-identified information, we know that there was 93.42% of respondents live in the city of Beaumont. Responses included representation from the entire city, but the lowest participation was from downtown, 0.56%. There is approximately 3.79% that identified living in the county. Highest participation rates were from the following age groups: 25 to 44, that was 42.76%, 45 to 64, 24.45%, and 65 or older, 29.64%. The following, following race and ethnic groups had the highest participation: white, which was 67.78%, and Hispanic or Latino, 19.31%. We also know that females had a higher percentage of participation in the survey at 59.4%. So now moving into each of those key areas of change, the first one was downtown. Based on a question about height, 66.04% of respondents prefer a mix of one and two-story buildings. We also know that 62.05% of respondents preferred angled parking. When respondent, when survey respondents were asked about specific types of features that they preferred and that they prioritized in downtown, the ones that came up the highest were one, public spaces, so like a plaza or a park, at 55.26%, wide sidewalks, we specifically indicated 15-foot or more at 51.08%, slower car traffic, 41.64%, flashing crosswalks, 36.38%, and pedestrian scale lighting, 34.83%. Just as a point of reference, we also noted what kinds of responses we got from people who were living in the county. Even though responses largely aligned, we know that slower traffic and pedestrian scale lighting were tied at 39.13% as the third priority. In terms of other comments, so these were open responses from survey respondents that kind of came up quite a bit. There are some concerns about downtown. Number one concern is homelessness. There's concern about the streetscape, so uneven sidewalks, uneven streets, potholes, things of that sort. Missing or a lack of street markings, so, you know, it's hard to see where the crosswalks are at, it's hard sometimes to see where the lanes are at. There's a desire for additional lighting. So consistency of lighting down, down streets, but also thinking about street lights and even thinking about the shape of light, of lampposts or the type of lighting that's used, people want to see more of that. And more generally, there's a lack of events and things to do in downtown. So people generally, you know, alluded to, hey, we'd like more pedestrian traffic in, in downtown. Again, just for context. Yes, Mayor?
Before you move on to the next one, could you define pedestrian scale lighting? Is that what you're referring to when you say the street lamps and light at bus stops, or is that something else?
Yes. So pedestrian scale lighting was given as an actual choice, but when people responded in other comments, they made other references that were more specific to things that they liked, and so those were the things that came under that. But yes, that would fall under the category of pedestrian scale lighting.
Is it more than that?
Is it more than, than those three things?
Than just what you've itemized here? Are there other features that you?
I mean, we, I think we're thinking of making sure that whenever someone is walking down the sidewalk, they feel they're safe, right? And so thinking about the distance between light posts, also thinking about how high it is, things of that sort.
Thank you.
No problem.
Monica, when you asked for downtown, you specified, clarified?
Absolutely. So when, let me make a distinction. When we asked survey respondents to identify what part of the city or the county they lived in, we provided a map that indicated each of the areas and what we were, you know, what we were including within each of those areas. But in addition to that, for each one of these sub-areas, we provided a map that only focused on that specific area, so people knew what part of town we were talking about.
Thank you.
No, absolutely. So the second area is a Sixth Street extension. We're now thinking about the extension of downtown all the way to Highland Springs. Majority of respondents prefer one-story corner buildings, and the majority of respondents prefer housing behind retail, 45.96%. Community members in the county also identified wanting the one-story buildings on the corners, but chose multifamily housing over housing behind retail. Just to clarify the distinction here, is they're both types of multifamily housing, it's just that one is the housing is included behind retail, and the other one is just multifamily housing. So in the second part of the survey, we actually began with a question to survey respondents about planning for change. So we presented respondents with four key trends across the region, so this is across the entire inland empire. And then we asked respondents, should the city plan for this change? Overwhelmingly, 93.02% of people that responded to the survey said, yes, we should plan for this change. Similarly, people that responded in the county, 92% of them, said we should plan for that change. So moving into the third area of change, the urban village south, when we asked people to rate top amenities that they'd like to see in the urban village south, these were the things that were rated the highest. Restaurants, 81.99%, so that was the overwhelmingly number-one response, followed by movie theater, 62.44%, open-air shopping, 60.21%, entertainment, 40.82%, and walking paths, 34.48%. When we compare that to what respondents identified in the county, we see that the only real difference is that walking paths is a second priority, and movie theaters actually moves down a little bit. In terms of destination points, so what do people want to see in this urban village south? Top response was retail. 52.52% of respondents said they wanted retail. Second response was a transportation hub, followed by jobs. When asked about the specific character, so height, of residential multifamily housing, multifamily housing of two stories was the, was the top response. For community members that identified living in the county, top-rated destinations are retail, transportation, and instead of jobs, the third priority was actually education. County residents agreed with the idea of a two-story multifamily housing in the urban village south. Moving into the fourth area, which we asked, responded specifically about traditional neighborhoods, we, there was a preference. When we asked survey respondents about whether they preferred for all housing to look the same or for there to be a variety of housing styles, the majority of respondents said they, they preferred a variety of housing styles, so 76.18% said that. When they were asked about top-rated features that they'd like to see in a traditional neighborhood, these were the things that came up at the top of the list. Neighborhood serving retail, 79.15%, multi-use trails, 60.89%, followed by a mix of uses at 56.46%, parks for recreation and gathering at 56.27%, and walkable blocks at 48.15%. When we, when we look at the responses for people living in the county, they also preferred a variety of housing styles, so that's consistent, 90%. But when you ask them about top-rated features in a traditional neighborhood, multi-use trails was at the top, so that's compared to neighborhood serving retail across the city, followed by, again, neighborhood serving retail, continuous network of sidewalks, and parks for recreation and gathering. So we largely see some consistency. The continuous network of sidewalks came, you know, it bubbled up a little bit more in the county responses. So, last section, south of Petra. When survey participants were asked about specific type of features that they'd like to preserve, the top-rated feature were panoramic views, overwhelmingly, 86.68%. We also see this in the county. The, the other features, there was a little bit more of a mixed bag, right? I mean, I think people want to preserve as much as possible. So we see sensitive habitat, 44.93%, natural vegetation, 41.55%, topography, 39.76%, rural urban buffer zones, 39.36%. So there's a little bit more of a, a split divide. There's a, you know, some changes when we look at the county. Although panoramic views were top-rated, the next top priority was topography, followed by natural vegetation, sensitive habitat, ridge lines, and rural urban buffer zones. But again, this is not inconsistent what we, what we've heard about south of Petra is people want to, you know, try and preserve as much of the natural beauty as possible. Mayor Lara, excuse me, Councilmember Lara.
Topography, are you just looking at mountains, or are you talking about change, any change in elevation?
No, we're looking at what's already, what's already there. So thinking about all the, the topography, the way it looks, is trying to preserve what's it, what's there.
Okay, thank you.
And on the county ones, ridge lines show up, but ridge lines does not show up in the non-county, in the top selections.
Yeah. So, again, I want to remind you, these are the top-rated responses, so if we, in this specific question, I think all the responses were fairly close to one another. And so we wanted to show you selection a sliver, right, of the top five. But I'd be careful with saying, in this case, that one did not show up, because this is definitely an area where people were split, aside from panoramic views, which is a number-one response across both groups.
Thank you.
So while that question was about preserving, this is now a question about incorporating. So are there features that people would like to incorporate? The top three things that came up: access to open space, 57.06%, conservation development, 46.32%, and three, limits on skilled homes, 43.14%. The conservation development has to do with how much you can actually build, right, on a, on a parcel. For community members that identified living in the county, these were also their top three choices. So, going back to other comments, so what were people saying in other responses? From what we can see, there's, there's a perception that areas south of the city are open space and rural, right? What do, what do people say in response to that? One, there's too many people in the city. There's, bringing in more, more houses is going to generate more traffic and infrastructure impacts. Two, there's already sufficient housing in the city, right? So why do we have to build more? Two, there's, there's, there's also an interest in well-thought-out planning, right? And so people refer to, hey, if we're going to do this planning, we also want to make sure that there's planning for K through 12 schools. We want to make sure that there's a diverse retail and commercial uses. And within this, there's opportunities for big-box stores, and there's also opportunities for small businesses. Three, balanced growth, right? How, how can we grow while thinking about the way in which our community can try and promote sustainability? And sort of big theme number three, there's an interest in innovative, flexible work
The last piece of our presentation then is to talk about what Monica just mentioned, how, what are the implications of growth of the land use alternatives that we are discussing with you? So based on the 2015 data that we have, there are 13,563 households within the city, and there's about 5,800 jobs. And what that tells us is that the jobs-housing ratio within the city is .42. Now, the ideal jobs-housing balance is about an equal number of jobs to the number of homes, so it should be 1.0. The idea behind that is that, that helps first keep your economy more diversified, you have more opportunities for residents to work in the same city that they live in, so there are shorter commute times, there's less traffic impacts because you don't have long drive times during the peak travel hours. So there are multiple reasons why 1.0 jobs-housing balance is, is considered desirable, or even higher if possible. SCAG, which is the Southern California Association of Government, makes, when they prepare their RTP, which is the regional transportation plan, makes projections for various cities. So for the entire inland empire, they look at all the various cities and the county areas within it, and they say, we think this is what the projection, what we think the absorption of new homes and jobs would be. So based on the last round of information that they put out, they projected that within city limits, there would be about 25,000 homes and about 18,000 jobs, which gives us a jobs-housing balance of .7. So that's better than what's today, but it's still not ideal. It's not, it's not as close to the 1.0 that we would want to see in a community and where we can say this is a well-balanced and diversified economy. So just based on pure calculations, not what the market would bear, just build out projections for the city and the areas within the sphere of influence, the preferred alternative that we, that's under discussion right now, projects about 33,700 households within the city and the sphere of influence, what's on, in the general plan boundaries, and about 35,700 jobs, which equates to a 1.06 ratio of jobs to homes, which is where you would want to be. Again, the caveat here is, this is what the numbers are telling us. If every single parcel develops, we know that will not happen. Once we get approval today on the preferred, or final direction on the preferred land use plan, our, the economist on our team will begin to look at these numbers and give us some feedback as to how many of these units and jobs can actually, are more feasible within the timeframe of the general plan that's under consideration. They'll also give us some information about what the fiscal impacts are to the city in terms of, in terms of providing services to these new households, future households, and what the benefits of additional job, jobs is to, to the city's coffers. So those are all additional studies that'll come after we have direction from Council today. We will also be looking at a citywide mobility analysis, so we'll be looking at what kind of roadways might be necessary to provide connectivity within the city and the sphere to access each of these projected neighborhoods, as well as improved connections to the two major freeways and the major arterials within the city. And once we have that, we'll be preparing the general plan document with goals and policies which will help guide, guide you as you make land use decisions in the future. And with that, we can open it up for any questions that you might have, and once, you know, once we've answered those, if you'd like to open it up to the public. And here's the preferred alternative map again, in case you have any specific questions.
Thank you. Open it up to questions from Council. And this is a workshop, so it's a little bit more informal than typical councils, so we'll just get questions as they appear from any Council member, and then if there are questions from the public that are here, if you have a question, you're welcome to fill out a request to speak and come to the podium and apply all the usual standards of public comments to, when you come up and ask your question. But I'll open it up to Council first.
Mayor, may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I'd like to withhold any questions I have until I hear the public comment.
Does everyone else agree with that one?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
All right. Because we have a big public turnout today, so we'd like to make sure that we get through as many questions as you may have, so.
Would you like me to answer questions as they come up, or do you want us to have?
They can state their question, and then it's probably going to be an answer that comes from you, or Monica, or Rebecca, and whoever's appropriate will ask them to get up and add to the answer, if we could. All right, thank you. So do I have to open the public hearing in order to take the questions?
Just public comment, yes.
Okay. I will open public comment at 5:40.
I do have a written comment that was submitted, so I will pass that out. I do have a written comment that was submitted, so I will pass that out. And then we will, in the meantime, we'll go through these. Yes, please.
All right, why don't we go to the, the first person who wants to speak, and then we'll, after everybody gets the written one, then we'll go to that one.
First speaker is Mary Daniel.
My name is Mary Daniel, and I live at 14250 South Beaumont Avenue, Highway 79. I just have a few comments about this proposed general plan. First of all, if this plan is adopted, you really are going to have to stop saying that small-town atmosphere. That is totally gone. This plan is a build-out for a very large city. There will be no small-town left. Most of the sphere of influence, south of Beaumont, where I live, has some kind of land use indicated for development, for houses, for factories, or warehouses, or commercial development. Something is going to be built on just about every piece of ground out there. The only open space is the land that's already been preserved a long time ago, I guess we should be glad of that, and that minuscule green circle that's called a beltway. Otherwise, the land use in the southern part of the sphere of influence indicates heavy development in one form or another. And much of that development is going to be crammed onto the back of Highway 79. These people can have not have gone out to Highway 79. That is a traffic nightmare already. With a roadway that has more cars than it can handle, along with an intersection that is an atrocity, how smart is it to even think about adding an urban village, which is up to 20 dwelling units an acre? A highway commercial center with big-box stores and large-format retailers? Not to mention the planned high-density residential, which can have up to 30 dwellings per acre. Highway 79 is going to be gridlocked from morning to night, or it's going to be turned into another freeway that's right in the middle of Beaumont. I went back and read some of the comments from the several surveys that this consultant did, and I hope that each of you will take the time to do that, because these are the comments from people who actually live here, and they should be the ones you're listening to. Rather than taking only the word of a consulting company hired to do a job, which evidently was to devise a plan to make Beaumont into a metropolis, a large number of the comments said that the city should concentrate on making better what we already have, building the infrastructure that was neglected by the previous administration, and stop indiscriminately adding more houses and warehouses. And I certainly agree with this and have spoken many times on it. So my advice would be that while going through this general plan process, instead of having a consultant tell you all the ways you can make Beaumont bigger, why don't you listen to the people who live here and elected you to represent them, and concentrate on finding ways to make Beaumont better? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels.
Robert Moreno?
My name is Roberto Moreno. I live at 33 Nutwood Avenue. Just had a point that I need to bring up to the council as well. And though we are building these, supposedly building these areas here down south, some of my local neighbors wanted me to ask the council, and this is not to do with the building as far as more parking. They've noticed that in their particular neighborhood, they've seen a lot of their, you know, neighbors and so forth come in and do a lot of parking of commercial vehicles. So when they're having events, like they're doing the weekends, a lot of these homeowners park a lot of their commercial vehicles in our, you know, streets. So a lot of their visitors who are coming to the party or the gathering don't have no place to park. So they're wondering if there's going to be some kind of a code established by the city with some maybe volunteer aspects of it, where we can kind of patrol some of these areas and maybe institute a no-parking of commercial, large commercial vehicles, or RVs, per se, on the local streets. That's one of the things that they were concerned about this, because they are actually thinking, if this does come to fruition, that they would be interested in buying some of these homes in the rural areas. That's one of the things that I once wanted to point out.
Thank you. Could I ask you to make sure that you mention to Ms. Deming the area that you live in, just so she can double-check and make sure that the parking issue that you currently have is in compliance with what we expect? Would that be all right, Rebecca? Okay, make sure. Rebecca, would you just raise your hand so he knows who you are? Thank you. Okay, thank you very much for your comments.
Next speaker is Judy Bingham.
Judy Bingham, 115 Minnesota. I was around for the last general plan, and that general plan was strictly done so that urban logic could steal bond money. Also, the, the general plan, they didn't listen to all of us. So you see what happened to Beaumont, the congestion and everything we have. Now, I have a couple of questions. What is the part in blue up there? I don't see a corresponding color. Is that warehouses?
That's existing.
Existing what?
You, excuse me. You said you have three questions. Why don't you ask all three, and then she can address all of them?
Exactly what is south of Petrero? And by that, I mean, where is Petrero crossing the 79? Is it going to be at First Street? And show me on that map where First Street is. And there's a little road called Mellow Lane. Now, I wonder why Dave and Ernie named it Mellow Lane with tongue-in-cheek, because that's where they stole all the money from the Melrose bonds. So I want to know where this Petrero is going into. And, you know, Rebecca, you were a part of this. You know it. We've listened to you lie for years.
There were questions that, could you answer, if you, if you don't have the answer on anything, you can just say so and get back to us.
Sure. Firstly, as far as Petrero is concerned, at this point, all we know is interchange is being planned at Petrero. I believe the grand groundbreaking was just last week. The final alignment of Petrero is still undecided. We, we are not aware of what the final decision for that would be. We do know it'll come down from the, from 60, and at some point, it'll join up with Highway 79, and that's about the information we have. In terms of what these blue areas are, these are currently designated industrial or industrial commercial overlay, and we, the new general plan is maintaining those designations.
All right, thank you.
Ask a question.
First Street is right there.
Why does it go through my property?
So actually, there is a street called Petrero that is parallel to First Street. Yeah.
Yeah, there's one, but the connection...
But I think better to answer the question is, if you could sort of draw a circle on what area you're considering south of Petrero.
So the area we are considering south of Petrero is all of this. It's today zoned half-acre lots in the county zoning. And in the, in the current general plan, there, it's again designated for half-acre lots. What this plan is doing is reducing the intensity in this entire area dramatically from half-acre lots to either 10-acre lots or 40-acre lots. So as to preserve the, the existing natural condition that's there today.
Okay, so that would override the county's half-acre lots to make it 10?
No, the zoning, the county zoning is, will not be overridden automatically. After the general plan is adopted, the city can work with the county for them to update their zoning to, to the, to be consistent with the general plan. Another option for the city would be to consider annexation. This is not under, under consideration to my, at all at this point, but that is certainly an option for the city to consider in the future.
So in areas like this, which is basically the sphere of influence, regardless, we said at one, or 10-acre lots, as long as it's not annexed into the city, then the county could approve developments in that, in those areas at the half-acre lots that they've zoned for, correct?
Technically, yes, but the county also works with cities to make sure that their general plan, that the city's general plan is consistent with their zoning, and the cities, the county is going through an update to their, the county general plan now, and it's a good time to have coordination with them so that in the end, the city's vision for the sphere and the county's vision for the sphere are consistent.
Thank you.
And then the third option, obviously, is as being our vision for the area, it would be subject to applicant's annexation. This is what we would tell them, we would be looking for at annexation, the kinds of land uses if they were to propose an annexation.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Ron Roy.
Okay, well, I think that something is definitely going right tonight, to have this kind of a crowd. I, I think this is one of the best things I've ever seen. I think, well, that's another story, but I'm just saying, I see democracy at work here, and I do think this is an example of why you need workshops for every major issue in conjunction with a committee issue, a committee where you have like nobody showing up, okay? And this is fantastic. Lot of issues going on here. I wanted to make some corrections, if I may. The blue area that's south of Oak Valley Parkway has changed because of the Heartland Specific Plan Housing Project. That blue area, which is south of Oak Valley, that's kind of centered by the Bridge to Nowhere, is now housing. So you should change that. Also, the Hoyt Ranch at Jack Rabbit Trail, the area south of the Hidden Springs Industrial Park, you should put in the MHACP holdings that are county holdings that's south. That has all been dedicated, that's about 300 acres. If I may, I got a minute and 50 seconds.
You can't talk more than that.
This has now been dedicated as MHACP. So you should add that map on ASAP, okay? So again, I think this is important. This should be designed by the residents of the community, and that should take precedence over any kind of consultant that comes in. Let them, let the citizens do that. I'm hap, you know, this is a hardcore issue. And I'm in favor of preserving as much open space as possible and concentrating any kind of growth around our core, which for me is probably Beaumont Avenue as it goes over the 10 freeway. That's to me the centerpiece. So as, as you can concentrate it, the more, the better. So what I would like to say is, again, Councilmember White's touching on a really touchy issue, which is a lot of this is unincorporated area, and we're in battle with the county zoning. I wish that you don't have to have a project every time for a city or a county, you know, why do you need a project to annex? Can't you just go to the last goal and say, we're going to annex for open space? And I know there's rules and regulations. As far as setbacks, you know, when you drive through on the streets, you can't see the mountains even with one story. So I do think with multi-story, you can get away with it. I think you can do it. I'll get in trouble for saying that, but look at other cities like Okeechobee Valley, they have six-story limits. So I think if you do the setbacks, I think you can achieve the same effect. We have beautiful mountains. Let's look at other areas that have that. But again, I do think the more you can preserve the open space, the better. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Next speaker. Next speaker is Cliff Strand.
I'm sorry, would you... All right.
Good evening. I'm Cliff Strand, and I represent Wayne Lamb of the Lamb Trust, which is one of your larger property owners. It's outside of your city limits, but it abuts your city limits affected by this. Mr. Lamb is represented by Paul Mary Tyler, the law firm. Nobody has been noticed to this. I happened to stumble across this by a call to Rebecca about a couple of weeks ago. And so we'd like to have been given the opportunity to offer our input, and we would still like to do that. We, I'm hearing everything that's going on here, and I'm agreeing with a lot of it. We're not looking for any, to do anything high-density on what we, what we have. We can see a multi-use to the property and some low-density, very low-density residential in the hills with views, dynamic views up there. So we're right on Jack Rabbit Trail. We also do have an easement that goes right by the warehouse that's under construction. I forgot the name of the project. You mentioned it before, coming off of Fourth Street, and it did ends right into our property. So we have two points of access, and we're trying to figure out what we're going to do at this stage of the game. So I'd sure like to be on record that we have not been noticed, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. We, we're going to take care of that. Are you going to speak with him and set up a time and make sure he has all the documentation and an opportunity to talk to us?
Yeah, as was specified in the notice, as well as on our website, we do have a website set up where people can sign up to receive additional notifications. Our notification went out using our GIS data from the county and the landowner addresses. We do have a few that bounced back, so if people have canceled their forwardings, or they've changed their address on vacant property, they've moved or relocated but didn't change their address within the county as the property owner address, we did have quite a few come back. So we used the best information we had available to send out the notices. But we encourage everybody who wants to keep up to date on this process to sign up on our website at elevatebeaumont.com and on the, you know, the notify me or, there's an email list on there for, for them to sign up, and we're sending out all the notices through that as well. We send out all the notices for the surveys and meetings and workshops and things like that.
I'm sorry about the breakdown in communication. Have you signed up or given us your information so that we can keep in touch with you going forward?
I thought I had, but I will give it to you.
Okay, please make sure. And again, it's unfortunate, the breakdown.
I think one of the issues is people from out of the area, the owners, don't know that you have a website to build.
Fair enough. Thank you.
And the last speaker I have is Stacy Sago, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Like at home.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Stacy Sago, and I live in Sundance. I'm, I'm kind of new to this. I received no notice. I stumbled across it from a girlfriend who accidentally found it on Facebook. So I don't know what went out, but I certainly didn't know where I would have been here before. Just a couple of things. Do we have any idea what type of businesses are coming to Beaumont? Or are, is this just going to be new digs for the tattoo, the tire, and the dollar store that we have on every block? Now, what is here to keep them here? I don't know where all these jobs are coming from. How many jobs can McDonald's actually, you know, people, how, how many can they hire? When I drive down Sixth, or Beaumont Avenue, trying to get to the freeway, which is a mile from my house, it's an average of 10 to 15 minutes. I sit there through three-stop signs. So sometimes I go through town. Going through town, I see boarded-up buildings, graffiti, crappy lots. Is this what's going to happen after you put all this lovely stuff in a nice box and put a nice bow on it? I don't know why businesses, why you think all these businesses are going to stay when they don't. They come and they go, they come and they go. Is this going to be a pretty ghost town? I don't know if you can answer this. I don't know if you have any idea what type of businesses, who you're trying to, to come here to get, but I think that's also important. I don't... I don't need tires, I don't want a tattoo, and I rarely go to the dollar store. So I drive forty minutes to Palm Desert, or I drive twenty minutes into Redlands, or shop after work because I work in Redlands. There's nothing around here for me to stay in. Um, I don't go to Walmart. Sorry. Um, and it's, it's basically, it's hard for me to focus on anything new that you're trying to present with this lovely presentation and your colored maps. When I do drive over potholes, in the thirteen years I've lived here, two streets that I frequent have been paved, and that's it. Uh, it's hard for me to envision anything pleasant in the surroundings when it takes me three and four signals to get through Highland Springs down to the, down to the freeway. So I think maybe trying to fix what we already have and, and make us feel better about it might improve our outlook and, and maybe enable us to look to the future. Right now, I can't because the present is so disturbing. Thank you.
Thank you.
No other speakers.
If I can clarify on the notification, it did not go to every person in the city. It went, as discussed at the nineteenth meeting, to the Evolve Transform. So the Sundance would not have received notification, so I just want to make clear of that survey. The way we tried to get out to everyone in the city was through the website, through social media, through Nextdoor. Um, we had originally, for people with kids in the, um, school district, we sent out the original flyer and newsletter in the beginning to let people know of the website to sign up, um, through the school district system, that kind of thing.
Thank you.
No other speakers.
Okay. Do you want to, do you want me to read the letter? Or do you want to read the?
Whichever you would like. I handed it out so that all of you have a copy.
Okay, I'll read the letter. Well, good, so we can move on. Okay, this is a public comment letter, um, that I'm going to read. It was passed out, and there may be some at the back, right? Rebecca, we would like to respond to your notice of general plan update. As residents of the affected area, we are not in favor of the proposed changes for the following reasons. One, the land is currently rural residential and has been planned that way for years. Please review the existing general plan map. Please physically review the area, drive through it, and see how it currently is established. The rural nature of the area was planned to balance the higher density of the north part of the city. Two, the water is in shortage, in a shortage in the Beaumont and Pass area. The southern areas of Beaumont have been planned as rural and have a low water usage. To change this area to a higher density is not feasible as there is not enough water. Three, this area is on septic tanks as the density is very low. To add additional sewage capacity will not work as the sewer plant is already at capacity. Again, changing the zoning and increasing the density will greatly raise the sewer plant size and requirements, which have been designed for the lower usage. The sewer piping system has not been designed to handle this additional density. The piping system runs down First Street and was designed for the smaller southern density. This would create extremely high costs to install our sewer system to this area. Four, the roadway system will not support the additional density. The majority of the roads are existing in this area. The roads were designed for rural residential density and will not support the proposed changes. Furthermore, the Atgrade Railroad crossing at California Inville already caused significant traffic. These changes will greatly add to this congested area. Five, the four new areas have not been planned well as they butt directly up against the areas of forty acre lots. Planning should allow for transitions from high density to low density. The existing general plan allows for these transitions, therefore, there should be no changes. Six, since these are very significant changes, it would be appropriate for the city to have proper traffic, water, and sewer studies conducted with proper public comment periods prior to making such a change. Making this change without these studies would be improper and ill-advised. Seven, we believe that traditional neighborhood, the traditional neighborhood area and the jobs-oriented area proposed should be rural residential high and should extend from Highway seventy-nine westerly for the entire area. Eight, we believe the jobs-oriented area should be moved to the urban village south area east of Highway seventy-nine. Nine, we believe the urban village south area should be omitted from this general plan. Ten, we believe the high-density residential should be changed into traditional neighborhoods. Eleven, we believe the rural residential low and rural residential high designation should stay as newly planned. Making these changes as proposed will have many negative impacts, which the city has yet to mitigate or even quantify. For this and the reasons above, we ask that the city not change the zoning at this time or change the zoning to the preferred levels we've listed above in items seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven. Thank you, Stacy and Jim Love.
World's biggest hypocrites.
Okay, that's the end of the public hearing?
Yes.
All right, I will close the public hearing at six oh five and open it up now to council. Comments and questions? Yes, Councilmember White.
So I agree with Mr. Roy that this is great that we have a big attendance because this is an important issue. The thing that I struggle with, as we all would like the open space, and I'm, and I'm in favor of that as well, uh, but also a lot of the high requests, and even the last speaker brought up the fact that we have to leave our city to, to go to restaurants, to go to movie theaters, to go to any of those, um, type of amenities. So, and then the, also the issue was brought up about maintaining and repairing our roads, and they haven't been maintained or repaired for, there was quite some time when they weren't being maintained or repaired because the funds were not there, even though we did not know that the funds were not there, that, I, when I say we, I mean the citizens did not know. Um, and we have started, uh, road and maintenance plan that's starting to bring that all back. But the question you asked was what kind of businesses are going to come to Beaumont? And the kinds of businesses that we all want, I believe, are the kinds that everyone's talking to me about, movie theaters, Costco, Target, locations like that, restaurants. Something different, I agree, than dollar stores and, and auto repair shops. Those types of businesses are not coming to Beaumont because in their mind, we don't have the growth and we don't have the population that they need to, to prosper here. So one thing that we have to consider when we're looking at this general plan is what message are we sending to what businesses? If we, if we feel that we are comfortable with the businesses we have here and the number of jobs we have here, then we need to send a message to those, um, to those companies that there will not be any more growth in Beaumont. We want to stay as we are. If we want some of the other things, we don't want to drive to the desert, or we don't want to drive to Redlands, then we need to send a message that we are going to grow in a balanced way, in my opinion. Tonight, the decision that we're looking at is just to give direction to move this on. We're not making a decision tonight on the general plan that is written in stone. Uh, we wanted to hold more of these. I don't even think this workshop tonight was on the schedule of issues that we were talking about. Um, it was something that came up last time when we felt that some people in the sphere of influence were left out of the discussion. We decided, well, let's hold a workshop, even though it's not on the schedule, let's throw in a workshop and see what we can do and move forward. Um, so also, to respond to Mr. Roy's, uh, comment about why don't we just annex all the open land? Annexation is not something, that's taking of land. The city cannot just go and say, "We want you to be part of the city." It has to come from the property owners. So the property owners have to come to the city, or we could go to the property owners. But the property owners are the ones who have to agree to annex into the town. So we can't just do that. So now I have a couple of questions, and Rebecca, you can probably help me on these. Have we, in, in the, in these surveys or in the conversations, have we put out the question, and I think we could ask everyone here tonight, um, are you okay with not having restaurants, movie theaters, open-air shopping in, in exchange for open space? I mean, has that been an option on, I mean, I think that's a question that there, you know, if you, if you listen to what's been said here tonight, there's a number of people here who would say, "No, I don't want any of that. I want as much open space as possible." And then I think there's some that are on the other end that would say, "No, I'm willing to give up some of the open space in order to get some of the other items." Has that been an either/or?
I don't believe it's been an either/or. It's been more what do you want to see come to the city?
Okay.
We actually think we are, we are getting to the best of both worlds with the plan as proposed. We are saying that in downtown, in the urban village, um, in downtown along Beaumont Avenue, you could, and the urban village area that's along, um, along Highway seventy-nine, you can get the kind of amenities so that residents don't have to go to the desert or to Redlands, while at the same time, we are protecting a lot of the open space resources that, uh, that the community feels so strongly about. So the, the concept behind the land use map is, is to get to the, to both those objectives of the community, not, and it, it really isn't an either-or.
Okay.
A choice.
And, and the reason I bring that up is, you know, just recently, this weekend, I was in a brand-new home, um, at a Super Bowl party, and a lot of the neighbors in the area, also brand-new homes, lived here six, seven months. And when you talk to people who are moving here now, they're moving here because of what's here and also because of the possibilities of what can come here. And I'll finish with one last comment. A city's revenues are not on Melrose funds. The Melrose funds are to build infrastructures for the communities and the neighbors and the new developments. We repair our roads, we pay for police and service, um, and we offer services to the community through sales tax and property tax. And if we can't project a sales tax growth or a property tax growth, sales tax growth through more businesses coming in and less of our tax money going to Redlands or to Palm Desert, if we can't chart for that growth and we can't plan for more property tax revenue as well, then as a city, we cannot plan, plan the CIP projects, the capital improvement projects, like the interchanges, the streets, the roads. All of us have been here less, just over three years. We were not involved with the earlier planning of the city or the maintaining of the city. And we, we want direction from you. I mean, if it's overwhelming that the community wants us to stop all kinds of growth and move on to open space, I don't see any of us would be going against that. But I don't know that that's, that's the, the direction that most of the people in the community want to go.
Right, and actually, what might be useful here is, um, in our survey, we had some of the larger trends which are, um, ongoing in the inland empire, um, and we asked the question, "Do you think the city should plan for, for change?" And, you know, we had over ninety-three percent of respondents saying yes. And I'd just like to briefly, if I may, go over the, the trends that we had, um, presented in the survey. Firstly, by 2040, there'll be a million more people in Riverside County than there are today. And that's going to happen regardless of where they go. So Beaumont will get a portion of that population increase. So this, for the city, should plan where those new residents might go in a more thoughtful manner than just track development across the board, half acre lots everywhere, right? Another piece is there are thirteen mega warehouses that have been built from twenty sixteen, twenty-ten to twenty, twenty-sixteen in the inland empire. Now, we are not proposing that kind of growth here, but there is a market for smaller, more sensitive industrial growth, which do bring well-paying jobs to the area. So again, there's the growth happening in the inland empire that the city can be strategic about, targeting what kind of jobs, uh, you want to see. You don't want large warehouses or distribution centers where there's hardly any jobs, but it's just acres and acres of stuffs being stored in them. The third trend which we have noticed is, again, the growth in baby boomer, on the population in the, in the, in the inland empire or in Riverside County is supposed to more than double in that area. So as people grow older, the kind of homes they're looking for are different than, uh, single-family home with a large yard to maintain, you know? And this has been noticed across the country. As, as baby boomers age, they want smaller homes with less maintenance and, um, and just smaller homes because they're empty nesters or are past retirement, so they are, they have other, other, um, financial goals during their retirement years. And then finally, um, by 2024, that's just in the next five or six years, there's going, uh, a projection of almost a quarter million jobs, non-farm, non-agricultural jobs projected across San Bernardino and Riverside County. And again, um, can the city be strategic about attracting some of those to the city? And this is a question and a direction that we as, want from, uh, from, from the council today.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, there, I'm finished.
We may have more from council.
I also want to point out that the state does require us to plan for the growth coming. Our housing element, although not part of this, we have, we already have a, a housing element that requires us to plan for each income level of housing. We will be looking, they've already started at the, um, with SCAG and looking at the new numbers. So if we don't plan in this general plan here, when we get time to do our housing element portion of the general plan, we may be back here looking at, at the plan. So if we, we can't, we can't legally say, "We're just going to stop growth." By the state, in our general plan, we have to plan for future, um, population.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers?
I have a question, some statement on, on the, on the plan. We've been talking about the warehouses that are coming in and all that stuff. I'm more on, on seeing the Beaumont, on growing on, on the, you know, like offices and educational, I mean, I like the, you know, universities, if possible, and also healthcare in there. I didn't see that on, on the, on the plan. And, uh, I will jump on, on one thing, on, on, uh, that gentleman who mentioned about the, uh, I don't know his name, the blue area in there. And right now, we're, we're, we have a grand opening on, on the Potrero, and we know there's a lot of houses will be building there, and it's not reflected on our, our map in there. Probably, uh, we could, he's, he's right, I mean, to do a revision on that side. And also, again, my, my third one, I'm giving you all of this, so, uh, you know, on the downtown. And, uh, you mentioned about the pedestrian in there. When I really get involved with the city, I like to see the downtown have a, my word, it's a friendly pedestrian downtown. And, uh, it's not on the plan that there will be a more, more of the pedestrian lane or something, uh, from, from, uh, from California to, to, uh, Palm. And, uh, the way I see it, that's our, really, really our downtown, I mean, uh, and, uh, I agree with the, you know, growing, I mean, uh, building a two-story or, uh, not on the three-story on that side. I agree on that. I mean, I'd, I'd like to see on, on, on your, uh, on, on your presentation or your plan that really what we're going to do on, on those three items in there.
Thank you.
As previously, to respond to that, as previously discussed, um, as part of this RFP process, it does include a downtown-specific plan that would come back after we adopt the general plan for the downtown area to, to talk about and discuss the very specifics of the zoning code that we want to see in the downtown area. So, so that is part of this whole process.
Thank you.
A couple of questions I have. First of all, on the urban village south, the one east of the seventy-nine, those twenty units per acre, is there a height max that we have on that? Because I didn't see anything about stories or anything.
We have not established a height, but we don't believe it'll need to be more than two, primarily two, but with pieces, with components which could go as high as three, three floors within.
Could we put in a max if we decided that that was necessary?
Absolutely.
Okay, so something to consider for that. And then on your rural residential low on the forty acre lots?
Yes.
How many do you think that's going to be fitting in that area? Have you calculated that?
I think there'll be less than a hundred.
Hundred units. And can you remind me on the upper right, that red dotted line, what is that representing up on the, um, north, um, is that northeast?
Yes. Um, the red dotted Yes. The red dotted line is the sphere boundary. So, the, it diverges here, this is the sphere, edge of the sphere, this is the city boundary.
But, well, we're concentrating on the south part, though, right?
Right. So this is already-
On the map, okay.
It's on the map, it's already mapped out, there's no projected change.
All right.
It's the trailer part where you guys have the sewer, or Patsy, Patsy.
And then, Mr. Roy brought up a good point about the MHSCP.
MHSCP.
Yeah. Well, can you incorporate that next time we see the map?
Absolutely.
Okay, because I do believe that area does have some of that, and he's correct on that. My last thing was just pretty much to staff, on the Potrero, the dotted line, I hate planning and not knowing that something's going to be planned there, because I, I just can't imagine that not being, I just want to know from staff, and I don't need to know now about if that's on the CIP, as far as an extension of the Potrero going around the dotted.
My understanding is the county is planned on taking the lead on that. So we are not determining that alignment. It is the county.
Okay, but there is some plan somewhere.
Yeah, there is, yes, there was coordination and discussion, but it is, it is part of the county piece of Potrero.
Okay, okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Could I respond to something Councilmember Santos asked earlier about downtown?
Yes.
You had mentioned that you would like to see a more pedestrian-friendly atmosphere in downtown, and that is indeed the intent for it. One of the questions that we asked in our survey for downtown included, what are the features you would like to see in downtown to make it seem more, a safer, more pedestrian-oriented environment? And what we heard back were, as Monica described, was wider sidewalks, with a minimum of 15-foot sidewalks, which allows for opportunities for pedestrians to walk comfortably along, along the, along any retail that's on Sixth Street. Also talked about diagonal parking, which helps slow traffic down on Sixth Street, which again increases the, both the perception and the reality of, of a safer environment. Pedestrian-scale lighting, which again, with streetscape amenities, provides opportunities for visitors, residents, shoppers to actually spend time there in a more comfortable and vibrant environment.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a quick question? Can I, can I have a quick question for you?
Sure.
Okay. On your citywide context, on the household, on your studies, what's the, you know, per household on, on that? I mean, how many people on, on a per household? Because we, we got our projection on 2040, and there will be approximately 33,700 in there. I like to, I'm a number guy. I like to understand, you know, we're 46,000 right now. So, are we going to double that within 20 years? Per, 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 your, your per household? I don't know if you have a studies on that, on the area.
I believe the number of persons per household is 3.09. But as, but as I mentioned earlier, the numbers I showed there were build-out numbers, not projected to 2040. So those were not 20-year projections, those were projections much longer in the future in terms of if every property developed, which is highly unlikely that would happen. So those were just big-picture numbers of, of what, just-
Yeah, keep it there.
Calculations tell you, not the reality of how many homes we expect to be built within the 20-40 time horizon we are looking at.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. On the general plan, so, for everybody's, I guess, education, there are, what's the year? How many years are they good for?
The only state-mandated timeframe is in the housing element. Every, the, the whole general plan as a whole does not have a required timeframe. They recommend 10 to 15 years.
Okay. So, with our general plan, this is 10 to 15 years in the future that we're trying to look at. Within that 10 to 15 years, we have talked about-
We're trying to plan further into the future, but we would reevaluate that vision in 10 to 15 years.
Right. And within that timeframe, we're looking at potentially three different grade separations to help improve traffic. I think Pennsylvania's one, California's another, and the third is, or is it just the two?
I don't know if Vli is on the list or not.
Okay. So, and, so we're look, trying to look at 15 years out, and to try to plan as best we can to see what citizens of Beaumont want. One of the things that's very difficult when you plan 15 years out is, when you talk to people who want to develop businesses, they count rooftops. But whenever you ask them, how many rooftops are you looking for, they won't give you a definitive answer. So it's, it's a nebulous type of, of a number that I've never been able to get a response on. But they do count rooftops. There is a lot of economic leakage that we have from Beaumont. People travel outside of Beaumont to do their shopping. I, wife and I go to Redlands, and traffic isn't much better in Redlands, but they do have shopping. So it's, it's difficult because you want the shopping, but you also want the rural living aspects of what Beaumont has. And unfortunately, it's, it's a difficult blend to get both. And so one of the comments in the letter was, the, the transition from low rural residential to high rural residential, is there, there really isn't a transition in between that you can, that I've seen. It's, you, we'll dictate what the acreage per lot is, or per unit, but have you transitioned, is that-
So this is the area that goes right now from high-density to rural.
Right.
There is discussions in the text of the document to require a different set of densities on bordering. So you can create a transit, so there's different ways you can create transition, is what I'm trying to say. You can create more land-use categories, so that you've got a lot of transitions, or you can build it into the text, within so many feet is a transition area of a lower density. So if you're going from, even from traditional neighborhood to rural low, you can work into the text that says, this many feet, 300 feet, 400 feet is a transition area.
Okay.
And, and we would want to see a step down in densities.
Okay.
And then we can include that in the text.
And this is the information that we need from the public, correct? That, to help us with that transition, or is that just textual language that we would add to the general plan?
It would be your direction to us if you want to add a new land-use category, or whether you would like to see it in the text-
Okay.
-of the general plan, which will come back as, as we move forward.
Okay. And at the general plan level, I know that that's a high-elevation look at, at the city, we wouldn't see trails at that point either. That would be a lower, like a specific plan type of view, or would you want to do that at this level?
Similar to the circulation element, we cover the bigger items within the general plan, including trails and connections.
Okay.
When you get to very specific locations, that's where you see it in the specific plan. As it's shown in here, you kind of have more of a, a nebulous area, because we don't know how the development would occur, and where those open spaces can connect for, for linkages. And so we've kind of left it as a, as more of a nebulous area. And so the same thing, we do have a plan for trails in the general plan, and we would update that and take a look at it, and, and try and make sure we're linking across the city. Currently, our general plan talks about the linkage through the Edison easement. So we, so we do refer to that, and we do plan for it in the general plan.
Okay. And then my last comment is, for me, I think, and, well, for me personally, it would be nice to get a hard-line break between the city boundary and the county boundary.
Okay.
So that people can see that we're also trying to plan for impacts that, that current county zoning has, or potentially could have, on the city, in that if we don't reduce that, that density, or we don't do something about that, that the county can potentially build a higher-density development right on our border, and we would miss the opportunity to try to plan for that in the future.
Yeah. We, you know, we, we show the city boundary. Again, we don't control the county.
I understand that.
So, we, we can work with them as best as we can, as, as was mentioned, if this is the preferred, if you guys give us direction, what we need to move forward on a preferred alternative. We are planning on sending it to the county, so that we don't get too late in their general plan process.
Right.
But we can't guarantee they want to sit down at the table and discuss it. And really, then it becomes more of a vision for our city at annexation time.
Right.
The biggest problem you're going to have in the county with higher-density development is whether it can be held without city sewer.
Right.
Higher-density development may have to apply to annex, and then they would have to meet our general plan to get those services, if that's, you know, the direction the city was going in.
And it was just hard for me to pick up the city boundary, that's all I-
Yeah, it's a black, it's a black line, it's-
The maps are bad.
I'm old, I apologize. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I just have a couple of quick questions, and we're about a half hour behind, so hopefully I can get through them real quickly. One of them was, you talked about the retail housing mix, where there's retail and housing behind. Are you talking about a live-work setup? Are you talking about just having housing zoned behind retail? What you-
So, the one that was talking about the housing in the survey behind is in our, is in our downtown. So there may be some multifamily apartments behind retail, fronting Sixth Street. There could be, the, more of the live-work was set more in the idea of that urban village, where you might have apartments above shops or, or other things like that. But in the one where it talked about homes behind retail, that discussion was related to our downtown, and how we want to create that lively downtown.
Okay. And, thank you. And the, I agree with Councilmember Santos, that in some areas, you could probably go up to the two-story if the setback was appropriate. It, it might not affect the views and still give us good opportunities without degrading the views. And one of the things I'd like to consider, too, is, and I, I'll probably bring this up again, is making sure that the topography on the hillsides is protected, so that it's both safe as well as visually pleasing to us.
And this line between the low and the high rural residential was drawn to try and match the topography.
Okay.
To the higher topography, we created a lower density, where there's, where there's less of a mountainous terrain is where the higher density comes into play. So we did take into, take that into account in putting this together.
And the downtown area, there was, the downtown area, the existing downtown area, they have been crying for improved parking, crosswalks, traffic to go slower through there. They currently feel as if their businesses are being starved by not the best management for commerce for them in those small businesses. And, and I, I agree with a comment that was made earlier, that we need better choices for the small businesses. We don't need necessarily, and I don't want to pick in any one type of business, but we definitely need an improvement in the mix. And part of the general plan that I see, that works for that, is if you owned a small commercial property in the downtown area now, and you wanted to sell it, and you wanted somebody to build on it, it would be hard to attract someone other than a tattoo parlor or tire shop, as the speaker mentioned. And if we do this right, we are really hoping to be able to get a better variety and a better quality of small business, because I think small business is a good, healthy job generator for our kids when they need their first job, and for many in the community. I think square footage, they generate a lot more jobs than warehouses do, that's for sure. So I'd like to see better quality small businesses. The, the last thing that I want to mention is the leakage. The leakage has been a big concern of the city for a while. And we could commute together to Redlands or to Palm Desert to go to restaurants or to do some shopping. And we need that sales dollar to remain here, because we need to be able to spread out that revenue for the city on a more sustainable basis. The other thing is, I look at what's behind that, and that is our property values. Our property values for our houses that we currently have, where you're, everybody's concerned about making sure that we protect that, and the value of our property gets more sound when there's a healthier variety of choices in the community. Somebody wants to buy your house someday more strongly, if you decide to sell it, if there are good restaurant choices, or maybe a movie theater. If we limit the choices or go down even more in the choices that we currently have, it's going to affect you in the pocketbook. And you don't always think about that until later. So, there's a bit of leadership on property values that has to happen with this general plan, so that we make sure that we do our best job that we can on protecting your property values. And if you don't own residential, but you own a small commercial lot, the same is true for you. It's the property value of your commercial lot, and you have a right to have that respected, whether it's a residential property or a commercial property. So with that, if there are no more questions, we are a half hour, unless you want to respond, Rebecca?
No, but we do need a formal consensus-
We do.
-for direction, so that we can start moving forward.
Where I was headed.
Thank you, sorry.
We are just 35 minutes now over. I really applaud you all for coming out and for caring about the general plan. Everything that you said did not fall in deaf ears. Your comments are highly valued. Follow-up, if I've asked you to go ahead and leave your address, or make sure that you're in a communication loop. And we will, again, this is not approving the general plan tonight. This is a motion to move forward further in the process and move on to an EIR. So do I have a motion from a council member?
Let me, before we do that, just let me clarify the process one more time here. According to the schematic, we are approving this to go forward, and then your next time that you see us, what will we expect?
The next step after this is approved is, we would have our scoping meeting for the EIR, but we would do that at the planning commission level, and invite the people out for the scoping meeting, and then we would start preparing. We'd meet back with you as we start to talk about policies and, and stuff within the general plan.
Okay. And at what point can we modify if we need to, along the way?
There's, as we, as we come back with specific, obviously, this doesn't have the exact lot lines.
Right.
So as we come back with specific areas, minor movements are available to, to the council. The biggest concern is a major change, could require us to start back over with an EIR, new costs that would need to be approved to start over. So this really is the preferred alternative that we're basing all of our analysis on, our traffic analysis, our EIR, our feasibility study, all of that, that, we, we need a map to start those analyses. And so any changes, if they're not minor in nature, could require additional revisions and additional costs added to the project.
Before you sit down, the letter, number six, talked about it'd be appropriate for the city to have proper traffic, water, and sewer studies. That's all part of the EIR process, correct?
All mitigation measures are reviewed as part of the, correct, the EIR.
Okay, thank you.
So, we need a motion to direct staff on a preferred alternative for moving forward with the general plan and the environmental impact report. Do I have a motion?
So you were looking for concession that we're okay with what you have here, correct? Or if we have changes we need to make, we need to voice those right now?
That's our request, yes. If you have, if you want to make a motion with a change, and, and move forward with a change, that's great. Otherwise, if you want to move forward with as-is, that's what we're looking for.
I'm sorry. So, is it my understanding, then, that, that this proposed refined preferred alternative had input from the committees that were created, and they've all approved and bought off on these?
That's what we brought, we brought back to you at the December 19th meeting, the three different that came up, one from the survey, one from the task force. And we combined them into this refined alternative to, to come up with kind of a combination of community task force.
Right.
To you.
I appreciate that, Rebecca, thank you.
And- And Rebecca, you will take input on clarification on the maps, et cetera. All of that will go into what you bring forward, correct? In other words, you know, where someone questioned and said that, you know, we need to define that there's now a housing element that's within a particular area, if there's any corrections, you are putting that into your documentation?
The documentation will have the details, correct? As talked about when policies for transition areas, those kind of things, those will all come out as we write the document.
All right.
I move that we accept this general plan as a consensus and move on to the EIR and traffic sewer water studies that come with it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Santos?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes. With that, I will close the workshop for the general plan at 6:40.